From W K R G Plus, your local election headquarters. This is Politics with Pete.
Welcome in everyone. I'm Peter Albrecht and we are talking this hour about all of the city council races in the city of Fairhope. There are five places candidates run at large. We'll talk to all of them and we're going to start here with Troy Vickers. Troy, thanks for being here. You are running in place one. Tell me about your background and why you decided to run for city council.
Background is graduated in civil engineering from Mississippi State originally from Mississippi. Got a degree in civil engineering, licensed in the state of Alabama as a professional engineer. And I worked a project down here a few years ago in late seventies, knew this area. My wife and I moved here from Houston about five years ago and we just fell in love with Fairhope. When I got here, the engineering brain takes over and you start looking at things and you're like, well, I don't understand this. I don't understand that. And then you've got a few city council meetings and you feel like you may be getting a little disrespected as a citizen. So then it's time to step up.
There you go. Tell me about your top priorities if you get on the city council.
Top priorities for, I think for most people here in Fairhope is two things, maintaining the flavor of Fairhope. I call it the vibe of Fairhope. When you come here, people want to stay here. And along with that, to protect that, you've got to have the infrastructure and the growth, control of the growth issues around Fairhope to protect the vibe.
Yeah, there've been a number of moratoriums placed on development here over the last few years in Fairhope. Do you think they've been successful or do you think you need a more long-term outlook on it?
We need a long-term outlook. The moratoriums have helped. But what happens is the moratoriums have been not continuous. I mean, the state only allows you a certain period of time that you can put a moratorium on, but you can continue those moratoriums as you look at the circumstances. And we have had these breaks. Well, when we have the breaks, we have more applications come in and the next time you have a moratorium, those applications are still being worked and they can continue to grow. So we have this issue of how do we stop growth till we get our infrastructure handled? We've got a major infrastructure issue. And when I say infrastructure, it's water, sewer, all the pipe stuff.
Yep.
But then we have sidewalks, we have streets, we have lighting, we have the hospital, we have our schools. All of that factors into infrastructure along with police force and fire department.
Yeah, and a lot of money's been spent over the last few years on infrastructure. You see a lot of road work going on. Are you keeping pace with the growth or maybe making up for lost time as well?
I think we've been in a more reactive mode. We haven't got to that area where we can say we're proactive now. A lot of this has been driven by not our own efforts, but court decrees and things like that. We need to get to the point where Fairhope is in full control of our efforts and not somebody else forcing us into doing something.
Tell me your thoughts about the current city council in general and your opponent in particular and how they've handled things here recently.
There's been some problems. I mean, I think that goes with any, probably if you look at any city in the nation, city councils have problems. I think the city council has had some issues of just stepping up and providing real leadership. Sometimes that means you've got to step out a little bit and take a stand and not be worried about being sued and things, but you've got to do what's right for the citizens of Fairhope.
All right. Well, Troy, thank you very much for being here. I wish you the best of luck. And when we come back, we'll be speaking with Troy Vickers' opponent. So stay tuned. We're joined now by Jack Burrell, the incumbent in place one. Just heard from your opponent. Now we're going to hear from you, Jack. And I know you're the senior statesman on the city council. Tell us about your experience with the council and otherwise your personal background.
Well, my personal background is I've been living in Fairhope for over 25 years. I've been, I believe, heavily involved in the community, serving on numerous charitable boards, volunteer committees and whatnot. I'm going into my 13th year on the city council. 10 of those years I've been city council president and as such, you serve on, I mean, on the airport authority, the industrial development board. As we were talking before, you know, I'm the chairman of the Eastern Shore MPO. So for me, it's not just a city service, but it's a regional service as well. You know, I'm an aerospace engineer by trade. I'm still a full-time engineer, go to work every day in my home office, but nonetheless, I still work every day. So it's a labor of love and, you know, it's a service to the community in my mind.
What are you most proud of, of your dozen or so years on the council?
I would say at the top of the list, two things. We eliminated the general fund debt several years ago. I had pledged to do that or to try to do that. You can't do anything on your own. You have to work as a team. So I'm one-fifth of the votes on the council and we have to work with the mayor on budgeting. So eliminating the debt was probably number one and number two. Up at the top also is preserving a lot of our iconic landmarks. We preserved the triangle property, 108 acres there, which is the ribbon cutting for the Flying Creek Nature Preserve will be this Saturday. We saved the K-1 center downtown. That's going to open up as Hatch, an entrepreneurial center for the city. I mean, it was at one time being talked about being sold to be a hotel or condos. We've renovated the pier. We purchased 40 acres at Colony Nature Park, 115 acres of recreation land at 13 and 32, and the list goes on and on. So I think preserving that land and the elimination of the debt were two of my biggest highlights.
Where do we stand in Fairhope with our big infrastructure work in terms of drainage and roads? You see a lot of work around town right now.
You know, we're spending so much money on infrastructure right now, Peter, that you can't even spend the money faster. You can't physically put product in the ground faster than we are unless you ask everybody to move out of town and tore up every street and sidewalk right away in the entire city. So we're well into our cast iron replacements on our gas lines. We're in phase two of four. We have reached a capacity in our water of 11 and a half million, soon to be 13 million. And next year, we will peak at about 15 million and that'll give us some additional capacity to sustain us for about 20 years. We are caught up on our electrical utilities. We're putting some redundancy in the ground right now so that if one substation goes down, another substation can pick it up. That's nearing completion. And then on the sewer, we're in the midst of upgrading our headworks and our collection system. The sewer plant only runs at about 50% capacity as far as treatment, but we want to make sure that it gets there and we don't have the influx of fresh water. So we're well into it.
What's your blueprint for residential growth in Fairhope while maintaining the flavor of the city?
Right. Well, you know, 90 to 95% of the growth has occurred in the county and some of those have annexed into the city. It makes sense to allow them to annex once built so that we get the ad valorem tax because they're going to impact our infrastructure, our roads, schools, et cetera. We need to square up our city limits. We can do that after the 2030 census. We need to put place, you know, we also can deny water if we don't have enough water, if we don't have enough sewer, we can deny annexation into the city. So we need to make sure that we grow in a smart way, that we have a balance of commercial, retail and residential. And we're working on zoning regulations right now and building regulations to ensure that we don't get too dense as a population.
Jack Burrell, running in place one. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We'll be back to talk about place two right after this. And we're back this time talking about place two now and I'm joined by Joshua Gammon. First of all, Joshua, thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Secondly, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Absolutely. Well, my wife of 10 years, Elizabeth, and I have loved Fairhope for the last eight-plus years. We have three children, all born at Thomas Hospital, Isaiah who's six, Ava Marie who's three, and Evelyn Grace who is four months old. So very busy household for us. My wife's a veterinarian in Mobile and I work at the Grand Hotel in Point Clear, Alabama as a director of rooms there.
Lucky person, getting to work at that beautiful spot every day. Well, tell me why you decided to run for office? Why do you want to be on the Fairhope City Council?
Absolutely. Well, I've always been interested in service, service to the community, and I think this is a great avenue to pursue that. In the last five years, I've had the privilege of being on the board directors for Prodigy Pantry and really been interacting with the public and giving back is something that's important to me. Even more than that, though, I see things that can, I think, be a little bit better in Fairhope and I'm running to try to give a different perspective than what's on city council, a fresh voice, a new face, and try to provide the, what I believe the values of the Fairhope be better represented on city council.
You think the council has done a decent job, a poor job? What's your overview of that body of work for the last four years?
Yeah, no, I like to tell people, Fairhope's not on fire and that's a good thing, right? We just sort of need to tweak around the edges. We still have beautiful flowers, right? We're doing lots of infrastructure improvements. All those need to continue. My focus would be more on ensuring that we have a proactive approach, right? The last three years, we had water restrictions. We shouldn't have that going forward, but it's endemic of, you know, we've known about these issues for a long time. Let's do what we can now to solve those problems. I'm really focused on in my campaign slowing the growth to a rate that's manageable so that our infrastructure can be improved, our quality of life stays high, not just for us, but for our kids and grandkids. So that way, they want to stay in Fairhope, just like I was drawn here, me and my wife. I want to lower that grocery tax. We can afford to do it in Fairhope. We have a unique position because we have such a great tourism industry and those tourism dollars help us. And then lastly, I want to make sure that we're keeping our charm, right? Fairhope is unique. It's that genestra quo thing, that quality, but that means protecting our downtown, having great regulations and building standards, maybe a tree ordinance or two to make sure that those great live oaks are protected across the city. So those are the things that I'm focusing on. And when I talk to folks, when I'm knocking on doors, that's what they're interested in and that's what they want to hear.
Well, the grocery tax thing is pretty unique. It's been done at a state level where we've been kind of chipping away at that a little bit. Talk about that a little bit more and why you think that's a good idea for Fairhope.
Yeah, well, the legislature was great in this last session. They passed a law that allowed the municipalities to untether their sales tax, I'm sorry, their grocery tax to their sales tax. So we're able to independently raise or lower it. Fairhope's portion of that is 2%. At a basic level, I think taxing necessity for survival just is gross. It's not something that should be done. I understand that it may not be affordable and people can't, and all municipalities can't afford that. We estimate that it's going to cost the city about $3 million to cut that down. Well, the good news is the city has excess of $10 million of revenues every year for the past five years. We can afford to do it. Let's get the money back to the people. Let's stop taxing necessities that people need for survival and let's give people a little more money back in their pockets.
Yeah, you talked about achieving this balance between growing Fairhope while at the same time maintaining the charm of Fairhope, which is why everybody wants to move here in the first place.
Right, right.
So what are your basic parameters for trying to accomplish that?
You know, I think a lot of it is the boring stuff, right? It's not the fun things. It's the regulations, subdivision regulations, it's managing the comprehensive plan. And when I talk to folks who are on planning zoning or developers or residents, you know, what we talk about is, okay, we have this comprehensive plan, let's follow it. Let's make sure that we're not granting too many exceptions to that comprehensive plan. If we say there shouldn't be any commercial here, don't make a carve-out for a commercial. I don't hear anybody, and when I'm knocking on doors, dying to have a Dollar General on their side of their, on their corner. But you also do that by, you know, the historic commission that they've just established. That's a great thing, you know, helping with that. I talked earlier about that tree ordinance. That's a big thing that you do. You know, mature trees are a great thing in Fairhope and really a lot of Valwin County. And it's unfortunate that right now, folks can come in, I talked to some folks in the fruit and nut district, there's a couple plots, cut down 80 trees, 60 trees, and the lot has stood completely barren for three years, right? That just doesn't seem reasonable to me, right? We should have an understanding that these trees not only are helping to beautify the city, but they help with our drainage problems that we have, right? They help with the carbon and the overall environment in our area. So that's how I think you keep the charm. Of course, downtown's got to be protected. That's our brand. That's where the folks from the tourism try to come to. That's what draws them here. And so you need to make sure that every sign is pristine, every trash can is painted, the flowers are always looking beautiful. You know, it's those little things, those details, the things I have to focus on in my career, that we just have to make sure that we're focusing on as a city.
Last question, really quickly, downtown parking, what do we need to do there?
Yeah, well, I don't have all the answers, but what I do like to do is ask the right questions and go to the people that have solved this before. So other municipalities have solved this problem. My understanding is there's already a study being done by the city. But I think you have to sort of take an all-the-above approach, try to see, you know, do we need to have tine parking? Do we need to have some sort of paid parking? Do we need to have parking decks built somewhere? The biggest thing that we have to do as a city is we don't want it ever to be an inconvenience for somebody to come shop downtown. We want it to be a very easy, seamless experience. Everybody knows they can shop online and get the stuff in two days. So the differentiator for Fairhope is you get that experience downtown, but also can you get it quickly? And there's a lot of folks I talk to that avoid downtown unfortunately because they know, I'm just not sure if I'm going to be able to find parking. So we've got to solve that. It's better for the city and it's better for the businesses downtown.
Very good. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Joshua Gammon, running for place two. We'll be back and hear from his opponent in just a second. And we're joined now by Corey Martin, who is the incumbent in place two. Corey, thanks for being here. You've been on the council about five years. Talk a little bit about that experience.
Well, it's been great. The first year was kind of a fellow year for us because we got an extra year because we switched years on the voting from the presidential to the off-year of the presidential. Try not to confuse our constituents of when they vote. So we had a fellow year is what I call it, like a fellowship in medicine, is what we call it. But that first year and maybe even half that second year is like drinking through a water hose, you know, but lots of volume. But it's been one of the greatest experiences of my life. You're in an opportunity, in a position to have the resources to help people and to serve people and there's no better experience than that.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, family, professional background, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so I am by profession, I'm a nursing anesthetist. I retired from that. My wife and I own our own business, Fairhope Fit and Trim. It's a weight loss longevity clinic here in Fairhope, Alabama, so small business owner. I graduated from Sanford University. I graduated from anesthesia from Midwestern University. I've been back here in Fairhope for about 15 years by way of Tampa and then Gainesville, Florida, where I was practicing at Shands University. And now we have three kids. I've been married 26 years and it's a beautiful life here in Fairhope.
It's a beautiful place to live and that's part of what we're talking about with everyone is how to keep it, you know, with its spirit and its character and handle the growth because so many people do want to come here.
Yes.
What's your blueprint for that, if it's simple enough to try to boil that down?
Well, what we've done in these years of experience and paying attention to the details and the patterns of what we have, people are wanting to come here, it's a desired place. You know, growth is inevitable if you're surviving, unlike some of these other small towns. I know we want to complain because once we get here, you know, we want the door to shut, but that's not reasonable. I understand it, but it's not reasonable. So what we can do as leadership and as a city council is what we've been doing. We went into our sub-regulations and started doing some policy procedures to decrease density. We've also talked about squaring off what is Fairhope, defining what is Fairhope, meaning that we own our own utility business. So we need to have the numbers of capacity and we modulated those. So we modulate those numbers. We know what resources we can provide and that should be coming up soon, where our line's going to be. And we're looking at those type of things as far as structure is concerned. We also are robustly hiring fire and police officers. We have a relationship with Aldott so that we continue to expand and add turning lanes and ingresses and ingresses for our patrons and our constituents. What people don't understand, we live here too, you know? So we see what's going on, we see the deficits and we're diligently working towards rolling with the punches here because these are good challenges. I pray that some other small towns could have these challenges. So I tell a lot of people, these are first-world problems.
True enough.
Yes.
All right, let's see, there's another, more first-world problems would be downtown Fairhope. It's so popular that sometimes it's hard to find a place to park and the traffic can get a little messed up. Any thoughts about that? And that's the last thing I'll ask you.
Yeah, well, what we've done, we've reached out to people that are smarter than ourselves. We've reached out to engineering companies and they're at this moment doing a study. We don't have those results, but it's in the making. So we're doing a parking study. It'll tell us the feasibility of putting a structure up or going to pedestrian-only, walking or carts or it should give us all of that information from their experience so that we can make an educated decision.
All right, we're out of time unfortunately. Corey, thanks for being here.
Yes, sir.
Good luck.
Yes, sir.
We'll be back to talk about place three right after this. Welcome back everyone. Talking now about place three, we have the incumbent Jimmy Conyers with us right now to talk about his campaign and what's going on in the city of Fairhope. And Jimmy, you've served on the council, you tell me, for about eight or nine years.
Yes, sir, two terms.
What has that experience been like for you and what have been your major accomplishments?
The experience has been tremendous, you know, really getting to know the citizens and the issues in Fairhope. I would say as far as major accomplishments, when I first ran for office nine years ago on my original push card, I had two, two of my main long-term goals were completing city infrastructure and protecting some special pieces of property for the city, one being the K-1 center and the other being the Dias Triangle, which we are opening Saturday. Phase one is a 70, it's 108 acres total, but 72 acres of parks and trails. And it's taken nine years of work to get to this point.
Yeah, it's been something that's been in the news for decades.
Yes, sir.
And finally, kind of a solution to it, I guess. Tell us about your background a little bit. This is, this is not your day job. Tell us what you do and something about yourself.
So I am a market president for Community Bank in Ballin County. I run the Ballin County market and have an office in downtown Fairhope. Grew up in Atlanta, Georgia, went to Auburn University, got a degree in business management, met my lovely wife Ashley in Auburn and Ashley's a Fairhope native. And we moved back to Fairhope about 22 years ago, have two daughters and grew up here and in Fairhope schools and just love being part of the community and love being involved in every, every aspect.
What are the big challenges ahead for this city council over the next four years?
I think the on continues growth and infrastructure projects are certainly the big challenges. You know, the infrastructure, we have, we have just been doing a tremendous job, in my opinion, of putting infrastructure in the ground, if you will. We've probably done between what has been accomplished and what's in this budget, about $100 million worth of projects. In addition to that, you know, the growth is just ongoing and in Fairhope, we're a victim of our own success. Popular place to be and people want to continue moving here. We just have to find ways to try to manage that and control that as best as we can.
Yeah, it's a fine balance, isn't it?
It is, it is. Very, very challenging to find that, that nice level footing.
The infrastructure, it's not the most fun thing to spend money on, just like your house is at home, but it has to be done and Fairhope's been in catch-up mode for many years.
We have been. I feel like we've done about 10 or 15 years worth of work in the last five years and we have touched everything from gas, water, sewer, electric, paving roads, adding traffic lights, roundabouts. I mean, we have been touching everything and it's not always the fun projects and it can be a bit of a hassle. We've had multiple road closures and it does impact citizens and businesses, but we're trying to get caught up and take care of it as best as we can.
You know, downtown is another place where maybe a lot of the problems arise just because of the success of downtown. People want to go there to shop and eat and have fun. How do you deal with traffic down there and with parking?
So we are in the middle of a parking study right now and I'm open to hearing all options. We do have a parking deck in town that is not often completely full. Other than Mardi Gras and Christmas parade, it's usually has space available. So a lot of it's education, just trying to redirect people to that spot. But, but you know, the downtown central business district is the heart of Fairhope. And between that and the bay, I mean, that's what really sets Fairhope apart. So anything we can do to protect that experience for, for our local citizens, for tourists, we want to continue to make downtown a place that's thriving and open and hospitable.
Last question for you. Have you been able to keep up with, I'm going to call it quality of life amenities, parks and those types of things for families and for kids here in Fairhope?
Well, and I'd mentioned earlier, the 72 acre phase one of the 108 acre Dias Triangle, which is the Flying Creek Nature Preserve. I mean, I think that's a tremendous project. We've been adding pickleball courts, we bought 114 acres for expanding future recreation, recreational property. We, you know, we've, we've bought multiple other pieces of property around town that have, not only does it provide an opportunity for future parks and recreational areas, but it also prevents that from being developed and adding homes. We've been doing about a $10 million project on, on the bayfront and we're wrapping that up soon too.
All right, Jimmy Conyers, thank you so much for being here.
It's a pleasure to meet you.
We'll be back and I hear from Jimmy's opponent right after this. Joined now by Tracy Gatewood, also running for place three. Tracy, thank you for being here. Tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, professional, family, that kind of thing.
Well, I'm originally from Tuscaloosa, Alabama. I grew up in a small business owning family. My father started a menswear clothing store in Tuscaloosa in 1964, so I was raised around hard work and church and he also wanted us to have great education. So I attended Sweetbarr College, which is located in Virginia. It's a private women's college and I graduated with a degree in political economy. When I graduated, I moved to Dallas and then I've lived in Dallas and Atlanta, I lived in Atlanta for 13 years, Birmingham, New Orleans, and so now I'm here.
Wow, you bring a wealth of experience from different cities to, to the race. That has to be valuable for you, I would think.
Yes, it has been valuable. I've been able to see other cities and how they operate and, you know, the choices that they've made.
And when you came to Fairhope, like so many, I'm assuming that it was, you know, the beauty, the charm of this place that brought you here, which is great, but that's also this double-edged sword because so many people want to come and live in, in Fairhope. Tell me about how you would approach on the council, this really big, tough question about how to kind of safely grow the city without losing the appeal of the city.
Well, that's a question that all the candidates are getting a lot and it's a valid question because where there is demand, there is going to be growth and so it has to be done in a smart fashion and it has to be done slowly where our infrastructure can support the demand on the land. So we are, we're all talking about different ways that, that that can happen. By trade, I'm a commercial real estate broker. So I actually have a little bit of a different slant on the growth and I like to talk about it in terms of commercial real estate. And I have a little bit of a different view on that because I tell people that, you know, I notice that I have to run down to Spanish Fort and Daphne to get a lot of the things that I need because I can't find them here. So in my opinion, I believe that the commercial actually does need to grow some here. It will, in doing that, it will grow the, the tax base. I've been working with a client for a couple of years and haven't been able to get them into Fairhope because the space wasn't there. So I actually have now to put them in another city, which I don't, didn't want to do, but, but so in losing them here, we lose $3 million in over 10 years in taxes and so that's about $300,000 a year. So I really honestly believe that there's some parts of, aspects of the city do need to grow and that's, that's one of them. And also I believe that having a little, have another retail district will not only help, you know, grow funds, but it'll also help control rents because it'll, it'll provide a little bit of competition. And I think that as a small business owner, I see the strain that a lot of these small business owners in downtown Fairhope are having on their businesses. We're losing some because they can't afford the rents that continue to escalate. So, you know, it's all good. Can't blame the store owners, the building owners for raising rents. That's the way the market works, that's economics. But you, you know, you can't blame the small business owners for being a little upset and straining under that weight of that.
Yeah. What's it been like on the campaign trail as a new candidate? What have you learned from the people of Fairhope that you've, the hundreds I'm sure that you've talked to so far?
Well, this has been a fascinating and challenging experience, I must say. I have, I've learned a lot about politics and campaigning and all those things in a very short period of time. The people here are lovely and they adore their city, which is what you would want them to do. They adore it here and we have about, we have a large older population. If you live here, then you know that, which they are, a lot of them are retired, but I noticed that there, there are different needs, you know, with the older population. There's different values with them than there are with the younger ones, like the older ones value safety and security and things that you would assume they would. And they also want to have a peaceful, they value peace a lot. And so security and safety all feed, feed into that.
All right. Well, Tracy Gatewood, running in place three. Thank you very much for joining us. Best of luck to you. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And stay tuned, everyone. When we come back, we're going to talk to the three candidates who are running for Place Four. Welcome back, everyone. We're talking about Place Four now, and Jay Robinson is the incumbent in the race. He joins me now. Jay, tell us about yourself and your work so far on the city council.
Sure. My name's Jay Robinson. I am currently the incumbent for Fairhope City Council, Place Four. I am originally from Mobile. I've lived in Fairhope for about 20 years. I have a degree from the University of South Alabama in finance. But my full-time job is I'm a practicing attorney, practicing civil litigation defense. And I've been doing that with a firm located in Mobile and with offices in Mobile and Ballin County for about 20 years now.
And has that been helpful, having that legal background on the city council?
Well, I guess it depends on who you ask. Having extra lawyers around isn't always a popular thing. But it gives me a unique perspective in analyzing different issues that we see as a city because if you don't understand the full ramifications of every decision that you're making, there can be legal consequences. And ultimately, it can be very detrimental to the city. So I've tried to take all that into consideration and bring sort of a unique perspective or a unique way of looking at things. And I do believe it's been helpful on my years as a councilman.
So you're one of the thousands of people who lived in Mobile and was drawn to Fairhope. What drew you here? And is that still... That essence of Fairhope still there as the city grows?
Sure. Well, you know, to me, Fairhope is so special for a variety of ways. It's our proximity to the water. It's our vibrant downtown. But the charm of Fairhope has always really been about the people. And that charm is still here. It hasn't gone anywhere. When you go to events like our tree lighting and our Santa Saturdays or our downtown trick-or-treat, I mean, these are just events that seem like they're from a Hallmark movie. And so that charm has not gone away with growth. Now, with growth, we have issues that need to be addressed. And during my time on the council, we have done our best to address those in every legal way possible. And we will continue to do that because that's part of the job. And I don't think with Fairhope's popularity, there's going to be any reduction in the amount of people that want to move here.
Yeah, and that's the crux of this whole thing, right, is that balance. You've got to grow at some level, but you can't lose that charm.
For sure, absolutely. And so for us, we have taken steps. And the first of those is the use of temporary moratoriums to pause development in every way that you can. But under the law in Alabama, those have to be brief and temporary in nature. And so during my time on council, we've now enacted four separate moratoriums, and we extended one. So you might hear some people say five, for either six, nine months, or a year. And during those moratoriums, we've invested heavily in infrastructure. During this term alone, spent over $60 million upgrading and making our infrastructure more efficient, not just to accommodate the growth, but to make our existing infrastructure more efficient for the neighborhoods that have been here 20 or 30 years, to prevent things like overflows into the Bay. And just to make sure that we are adequately prepared to provide our citizens the services that they need and expect.
Any thoughts about teardowns? I mean, you drive through Fairhope and you think, okay, this is a really valuable lot. There's an old house that was probably built in the 50s, not that big. Are the teardowns coming that you've seen in so many other places? And what can the city council do about it?
So we actually... We've seen a lot of that, unfortunately. But one of the things we've done during this term is we have finally enacted a historic preservation ordinance and established a historic preservation commission. And so we're trying to encourage and incentivize our community to do whatever we can to revitalize and rehab some of these historic structures. We don't have the teeth right now to prevent them from tearing it down, but we're doing everything we can to educate them on the importance of historic preservation and incentivize them in every way to maintain these structures in every way we can.
The heart of the city is downtown Fairhope. Last question for you is what do you do about the parking situation? Are there any easy solutions there?
Sure. So that's been an issue we've had for several years now. And again, that's... It's a good problem because it shows how many people are trying to go downtown to shop, to eat, to visit. We need, and we've made efforts to make our parking garage downtown more visible. We've just finished the Arts Alley project, which has really been an emphasis to encourage people to go use that parking. We're continuing to work with businesses to encourage their employees to not take up premium spots in front of those businesses. We've worked with Coastal to have their students park further away from downtown. But we're trying. And again, you know, it takes everybody to make that happen, but we're working on it and continue to work on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Jay, good luck. We'll be back and hear from Jay's opponents right after this. As we continue to talk about Place Four, City Council in Fairhope, joined by David Luke, candidate. And David, tell people about yourself. What's your... A little bit about your background.
Yeah, sure. So I grew up in Mobile. My wife grew up on the other side of Pensacola. And about two decades ago, as most guys did back in that time, I brought her to Fairhope on a date night, walked the pier. And as we were walking about halfway up the pier, she stopped and she said, David, this is where I want to be. This is where I want to raise my family. So 22 years later, we've had two daughters that we've raised here. We started our business here. We worship here. All our best friends are here. And really, the reason that I'm running is to help maintain the charm of Fairhope. Both of my girls have indicated they want to come back here and raise their families as well. And so I'm going to make sure that they have the opportunity to experience what we've experienced and so many others have experienced for generations to come.
A lot has changed in 22 years in Fairhope, that's for sure. But do you think the core essence of Fairhope is still alive and strong?
Yeah, and it really comes back to the people that are here, more than really community or the city of Fairhope as itself, as we see things, you know, from that perspective. But there are definitely a lot of things that have changed. Of course, growth and infrastructure is number one thing that I hear when I'm out and about. Number two is the quality of life, which goes hand-in-hand with the growth and infrastructure. And I do believe there are certain things that we can do, certain levers we can pull to kind of slow that growth. I will tell you, we're growing at about 2.94% annually, which is three times more than cities of our size. So, you know, around a 1.5% growth rate, I think we can manage that well. Continue to invite people to join our community without burdening the system like we have over the last several years.
You're running for council. You're running against an incumbent. So you must feel at some level that things can be improved upon on the city council. Tell me where you think it can be improved upon.
Yeah, well, there's certain... Definitely certain things there. The growth in infrastructure, again, number one. I am for continuing the moratorium that's in place. Also, expanding that to all development, not just multifamily homes. Also, Fairhope is the largest provider of water in the city of Ballin County. There are things that we can do with that as well, just to make sure that we have the capacity here in Fairhope for our citizens first before going outside and providing those customers. So that's two big things in the infrastructure. Public safety is also a big thing. We have a great departments, police department, fire department. But we need to be evolving also as we continue to grow. So one of the things we're looking at that I recommend first is to put together a three-to-five-year plan for transitioning our fire department to a paid or hybrid department where the volunteers who are currently there and have served us so well over the years work alongside with paid members of the department. Also, in public safety, EMS, ambulance service seems to be an issue. So I propose that we staff city vehicles, rapid-response vehicles with advanced life support paramedics that can arrive at your house in just minutes, begin rendering treatment while we wait on an ambulance to come and transport you to the hospital. Two things there, it fills that gap, but it also helps provide the city with a revenue stream as well.
What big infrastructure projects are at the top of the list for you?
Well, you know, what's going on right now with the replacement of the water and the sewer pipes? We're really just making repairs. They're not necessarily upgrades. So we're playing catch-up, as it is. So the current plan takes us out to 2030. I think we need to accelerate. I think we need to look at maybe issuing some municipal bonds. We are debt-free. We could get a... We have a great credit rating, and we could get fabulous terms, I believe, in the bond market to do so. And accelerate those things. So we're not playing catch-up.
I know there's a traffic parking study that's currently being done. When you think about improvements to downtown and traffic flow and parking, what are some of your ideas there?
Yeah, so the downtown parking garage is fantastic. Unfortunately, nobody knows about it, right? As I walk through the garage, it's typically about 20% at capacity of capacity. I was at one of the restaurants downtown last week, and the city's printed out these nice little postcards to tell you about the parking garage and the benefits of it. It's two-sided, it's very well-done. The problem is you've got to be able to get to those stores that have that postcard to see the postcard. So it's kind of putting the cart behind the horse, right? You know, that old saying. But another thing here, the use of golf carts has exploded. Golf carts are really about half the size of cars. I think that we could split our parking spaces downtown and allow two golf carts to park in one car spot, if you will. And so that'll help with the capacity of our parking on the street as well.
Last question for you. Where do you see Fairhope maybe in 10 years or in 20 years from now?
My vision is for my children and future generations, as I've mentioned, to maintain what we have. I see a vibrant Fairhope, that the downtown continues to provide services, not to our citizens, but to the tourists that come in. A waterfront that they've done an absolutely fantastic job with restoring. Just the charm, just keeping that charm. And I know through some of the things that we've talked about, that could be done.
All right. David Luke, thank you so much. Running for Place Four on the Fairhope City Council. And we'll be back in just a second with another candidate in that race. All right, we continue our conversation here about Place Four in the Fairhope City Council race. Hal Gibbons joining us now. Hal, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Peter.
Tell me about yourself. What's your background, professional, family, that kind of thing?
I'm originally from Louisiana. I was born in New Orleans. My parents met at LSU. We came to Fairhope in 1978. And I, as an adult, I've had a long career in Hollywood as a motion picture sound editor and also as a project manager building movie studios. I built a very large complex in Baton Rouge. Five years ago, my wife and I moved back to Fairhope, and there weren't a lot of jobs building movie studios. So I ended up taking a job here at a local manufacturing company, Marine Exhaust. I was a manual machinist, which I really loved. But we have a new child, and now I'm a stay-at-home dad and a candidate.
Okay. Well, tell me about deciding to run for office. There is an incumbent that you're running against, so you must feel like the city council can be improved upon the job that they're doing right now.
Yeah, I ran five years ago. I guess it was a lark. I mean, I... It bothered me that there weren't that many candidates. And five years ago, there were only eight of us running for the five seats. Two were unopposed. So this time, I asked my wife, I said, I'm thinking about running again. And she said, really? And I said, well, let me go check it out. I went and met with the clerk the day before the deadline for signing up. And I said, Lisa, you know, is anyone unopposed? And she said, well, they all are. And she said, no, Josh is running against Cory. I said, what about Place Four? She goes, no one's running against Jay. And I said, well, great, I can use my old signs. And that was literally all the thought that went into it. I've met Jay. He's great. We kind of... I say, how did I end up running against the nicest guy on the council? I have no bitterness towards any of them. This isn't... In my mind, this isn't to throw the bums out or anything like that. We have different focus. We have different agenda priorities like that. But the thing that I guess triggered it, and I have to mention this, is I was behind the library, and there's this huge sundial, big spherical sculpture of a sundial, and it's pointing the wrong way. It's supposed to point north, it's actually pointing west. And I thought, well, it just annoyed me. And then I thought, well, this is kind of a perfect metaphor. You've got this big, beautiful thing. It looks really scientific and cool, but it doesn't even work. And let's fix that. So I thought, well, okay. And I have a blog, and my first couple of posts I put up, you know, we've got to straighten out this sundial. And it was half joking, but also serious. So that's the gist of my motivation.
I understand. Well, we've been out on the campaign trail here, meeting with people all over Fairhope. What are they telling you that's top on their minds that they want to see done?
Growth, growth, growth. That's a great question. I've actually... There's a lot of talk about our comprehensive plan, and I downloaded it. It's on the city website. And it's a big 300-page... Most of it looks like a PowerPoint with charts and maps and things. But if you go to the back, there's an appendix B, which is the results of a public opinion survey they did. And it is overwhelmingly, slow down, slow down. I started searching, just Ctrl+F in this thing, and I see stop growing or stop building, slow down. I actually wrote a couple of computer programs to sift for these phrases. And I couldn't find anyone saying speed up or, you know, more development. And that happened to be my slogan, let's slow down. So I'm finding that. On the other big issue, the library, there are obviously people very divided, but the 80% that I talk to, the big middle, it's not on the top of their minds. It's all about development.
Yeah, and the library can be argued as really something outside of the city council's purview.
Well, that's a great point. And I've made a couple of proposals, one related to growth, one related to the library. And you've hit it. The problem, as I see it, is we have a board that's kind of hidden. Here's a... The New York Times came down and did a whole article about this big battle over the library. And they couldn't find one member of the library board worth quoting. And this struck me, like, how is this... Like, they're the ones that got us into this mess. The board, they run the library. How is it possible? They've got all these other people, Jack Burrell and everyone. So no, everyone's dumping on the council and has made this election about it. I think it's this. So I have a proposal. This is all on my blog, both the one about growth and about the library. I think we need to restructure with a more transparent board that more reflects what I see in the town.
All right, we're out of time, unfortunately, but I appreciate it. Stay put, Hal. We're going to take a break, and we're going to come back and talk about Place Five as we continue our discussion about the upcoming election in Fairhope. Talking now about Place Five, which does not have an incumbent in the race. George Fernani joins us now. George, thanks for being here. Tell everyone a little bit about yourself.
Well, I'm George Fernani. I was born and raised in Mobile, went to Murphy High School, moved to Fairhope about 28 years ago. I was in Charlotte, had small children. Charlotte was going through a similar thing to Fairhope, the growth burst. There were orange barrels everywhere, digging up the streets, this, that, and the other. So we came down here on vacation, decided that Fairhope was a beautiful place, and it was close to home, close to family, and the beaches, which we love the water. So we decided this would be a good place to raise our children. We moved to Fairhope and have absolutely loved living here. I was in business for many years, about 20 years. I partnered with Kevin Spriggs and Daphne, and we built LA Subs. We had two in Mobile and three over here, one in Fairhope and two in Daphne. And we ran with that for about 20 years. And I stayed in the restaurant business, worked with Gambino's for about eight years here locally. So in the restaurant business, you get to know a lot of people.
All right. And now you want to run for city council? Tell us why you made that decision.
Well, the development here has been pretty intense for the last few years. And along with the development, you know, there's a lot of houses being built, a lot of multi-unit housing being built. And there are more and more people moving in. I have no problem with more people moving in. But I had the feeling, because of the problems that it was causing with various things like traffic, crowded schools, crowded doctors and hospitals, and various other things, that perhaps Fairhope should be looking at a more long-range planning aspect of this. And we do have a long-range planning element to our planning and zoning department, but I don't think our focus is more long-range than it is just keeping up with the growth. And so that's why you see a lot of catch-up being played with our infrastructure.
Yeah, if there is to be new housing in the city of Fairhope, where do you think it should be and what kind of housing should it be?
Well, the only place that really you can expand, Fairhope can expand, is east. Can't go further west. So that's what's happening. Everything is moving east. There are a lot of large developments. There's a lot of farms out there that farmers who've had land for many years and they're unable to make a profit farming now. So they're wanting to sell their land.
You'd rather see it single-family homes than apartments or townhomes or that type of thing?
I would like to see... And we are... We do have some things working, like planned urban development. You know, we have some small communities, and our comprehensive plan calls for that. Small planned communities that have green space between them. But I'm not sure if our comprehensive plan's being followed to the letter. That's one of the things that I want to look into as a council member. And I want to see that, if possibly, it needs upgrading. I would like to see smaller communities. I don't particularly... I don't think it's a great idea to have a large number of houses altogether. all together. One big storm comes through here, you're going to have a mess, you know, that kind of thing.
One last question for you as we're close on time. A lot of people talk about downtown, the beauty of downtown, but they have trouble with traffic and they have trouble with parking and those kind of things. Where do you think that all stands and how can things be improved?
Well, there, there's a parking study being done. It's my understanding right now that they are looking at the parking. We do have the angled parking down there, which is unique. They tried some, an experiment with angling it outward. That didn't seem to work out. Parking garage, we have one, maybe, maybe informing the public a little bit more that that's available. And I think shuttling people in, we have one shuttle. I think maybe increasing the shuttling people in and having employees for the downtown businesses park in a central area. I'd like to look at all that and see if we can come up with some city property where maybe we could build another parking garage.
Very good. George, I'm sorry, we're out of time.
Okay.
Thank you for being here and good luck to you. And we'll be back with George's opponent in just a second. Joined now by Andrea Faust Booth, running in place five. Thank you for being here, Andrea.
Thank you for having me, Peter.
I know you've got a family background. Your dad served in public life for a long, long time.
Yes.
Tell me about your decision to run for public office here on the city council.
Well, I decided to run because I kept hearing a lot of noise. Everybody was fearful because of the vast growth that was coming into our community. And so I decided to get involved and I wanted to get in and see what was going on and so I could inform everybody, all our citizens.
This is an open seat. The other races all have incumbents in it. What do you think of the job that the city, current city council is doing?
I've had the privilege of being a part of their journey through this campaign and it gave me the ability to sit and listen. And I'm in awe of how organized they are, what a great job they're doing. They're being guided by Mayor Sherry, who is a fourth-generation Fairhope, just as I am. And we both absolutely love our community and we really want to work on keeping it small. And that means we want to keep the integrity and the charm and everything that makes Fairhope so special.
You grew up in Fairhope, so you've seen a lot of changes. Is it scary to a certain degree to see this incredible growth that's happening here?
I think you can, you can become a little fearful, but if you get in and you get to know what's going on and see how well our council, our council is managing the growth, then I think you would feel safe. And I think they're doing a great job. They're doing some surveys on our traffic. It's real heavy right now and it is frustrating. You have to have a lot of patience. I've had to learn patience. I sit and call, I sit and watch 20 cars go by before I can pull out. So I think we're going to get a grip on that.
Yeah. There's a lot of work around town. All you have to do is drive around to see the roadwork that's going on. A lot of sewer work and infrastructure work that might not be too glamorous, but it's kind of the nuts and bolts of what you might be doing if you win.
Exactly. And I will continue my journey with the council following suit.
Let's talk a little bit about growth and how you find that balance between bringing people in, which I, you know, everybody seems to agree, you can't just shut it off entirely. But, but how you maintain that flavor that makes Fairhope so special and makes people want to move here?
Well, that's, I wanted to run. I want to keep the integrity and the kindness and the growth is coming and we are managing it. We are working on some new zoning laws and I know that they're trying to put some real important zoning laws in place.
A lot of people talk about downtown being so important to the town and it is, but a lot of times people have trouble with the traffic and they say they have trouble finding a place to park, especially on weekends in the summer and those kind of things. Is that just something we've got to live with as part of growth or can we do something about it?
That's part of our traffic study by Walker, the company called Walker. And we haven't received that yet, but we're trying to get a grip on it. We want things to go smoother.
You've been here with your family, growing up. And when you talk about quality of life in Fairhope, what are some of the amenities that immediately come to your mind?
Well, we have some beautiful restaurants. Our parks are incredible. I am down at the bay every day. That's where I work out and it's, it's just a healthy environment. You can get out and take nice walks or runs and it's just, I feel so fortunate.
Yeah.
Lots of stores to shop in.
And things for kids, kids as well.
Oh, yeah. Well, my kids are grown and they're, they've moved on. But yes, it's nice to see the children playing and all their little parks and...
How about the schools here in Fairhope? Do you think they're still the big selling point that they've always been with all the growth and the increased enrollment? Have we been able to keep up here in Fairhope with that?
We have.